Good evening, it is Tuesday, June 26, 2019. I'm 18, I skipped a year.
Are you implying something?
I'm projecting. This is the Halifax Board of Selectment meeting and we will begin the meeting by the pledge of allegiance. Why does it say reorganize the board?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, on there it does, it says reorganization of the board. I was thinking, do you guys want to have me reorganize?
As Tom reminded us, we have to discuss the fact that we're all in camera.
Yes, oh yes, we are being taped by Area 58, which is on your local cable and YouTube. Correct. Okay. Anybody want to add anything to the agenda?
I did, per request, I did mention the police chief's search process that we're going to need to implement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't believe that's coming up real quick. I have nothing at this time.
Oh, good.
Okay, alright.
We already organized the board, is that what you mean?
Yeah, we already reorganized.
Take it off, you know.
Cutting and pasting.
Unless you guys would like to...
At a meeting, we're going to rotate.
Well, she said...
Well, maybe we should leave it on.
Well, she did say 2019, so we really put it...
We'll evaluate the performance at every meeting.
Thank you so far.
We should put that on the agenda at the end.
She's still on probation, so...
And she doesn't do a good enough job, she has to stay as chair. Yeah, right, exactly.
Until she get it right.
This is punitive, yes, yeah.
Funny. Okay, we have about three minutes, Charlie.
Yes. Well, do you have any bills written?
Yes, yes, we do.
Would you like me to read them?
That would be great.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants, commitments, and bills. Vendor warrant number 111 for $300. Withholding warrant, 112, for $121,556.59. Payroll warrant number 113 for $642,054.16. Vendor warrant 114 for $55,181.99. Withholding warrant number 115 for $184,675.25. Ambulance commitment number 6B for $49,717. Payable to Greenwood Emergency Vehicles, $14,594.50. I've never seen that before, that's why I paused.
Yeah, we had to firm a bill, two bills.
That was for the ambulance.
Yeah.
Payable to Greenwood Emergency Vehicles, $1,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the following warrants and commitment. Payroll warrant number 116 for $253,905.48. Vendor warrant number 117 for $80,273.14. Withholding warrant number 118 for $84,311.53. Ambulance commitment 6C for $24,149.
Second.
All those in favor?
Now, these year in.
Aye.
Yeah, they're still...
It was filled in, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it was still in this fiscal year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve payment of selectmen bills dated June 26, 2018. WB Mason for $92.67. Terminal Exchange Systems, sounds ominous, for $80. National Grid for $1,103.25.
Is that for the Town Hall?
Yeah, Town Hall at that. And National Grid, $54.9, and that's for the concession stand.
The concession stand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fine, thank you. Alright, we have an appointment.
Please, here.
Yes. With our potential auditors.
Well, yeah, but they're a little later.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we've got...
Oh, Daniel, Daniel's not here.
He is not here, and then we have the revocation hearing, which will take about 30 seconds to get to it.
Okay.
Is this, this is the third meeting, young man?
I don't know about...
Well, give them about five minutes.
Yeah, but in the meantime, before I do anything else, I did want to remind folks, mostly our TV audience, June 30th, Saturday, is the Halifax fireworks event, along with the Family Fun Day. There's going to be family fun here on the Town Hall Green from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Then, there'll be a respite, and then the activities will move over to the school side of the street from 6:00 to 10:00 with the fireworks, I believe, at 9:00 o'clock. The committee is still looking for volunteers. If you want to volunteer, and they do need volunteers for both the afternoon and evening programs, please contact the Selectmen's Office at 781-294-1316. We'll get you in touch with the fireworks committee. It's a great event, the weather sounds like it's going to be excellent, a little warm, so wear your sunscreen for that. And I hope we have a good showing for both the afternoon activities and the evening ones.
I think you ought to make an announcement too, that if you're single in that marriage, you can still come, you don't have to be with the family.
Yeah, that's true, but...
We're all family.
I just want to, you know, there are two people who have been organizing it. Colleen and Teresa Levinson have been organizing this. So, as Charlie mentioned, it does take a lot of volunteers to put this day on. Last year, we brought back some of the old home events, like the baby contest, and we have a bike decorating contest, and we have a cake decorating contest. So, if anybody wants to participate in any of those, they can check our website with links to the Halifax fireworks committee, and also, I think it was posted on Facebook. But, if you want to volunteer, please be at Town Hall by 10:45, and there'll be a booth set up for people to... And all those high school students that need their volunteer hours, if you bring your forms, we'd be happy to sign them, and, yeah.
College, too.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. A few things, then, we'll wait and see if Mrs. Zorris comes in, and then at 7:45, we'll do the 30-second continuation of the revocation hearing. 395 Plymouth Street, which is the Red Farmhouse, just a progress report on that. The building inspector checked with Land Use Council about a way for the current owners to convert their current permitted four units to a permitted six-unit structure. And Land Use Council did state the owner can legally apply to increase the permitted number of units in the main structure from four to six, so there is a path. If they do that, that's going to help the tenants there, because the building inspector can help bring the building more closer to code. That's going to, so, and also, make the situation all legal at this point. There are some other considerations that have to play into that. There may be additional variances in terms of setbacks and such that are needed, but at least for the special permit for going to six units there, that's a permitted use as long as they get the special.
I would hope that the owner or management who have managed that do what they have to do, because it'd be a shame to kick people out on the street, you know, just because somebody didn't... It's a lot of proper paperwork.
Charlie, has that something that the zoning board of appeals can have on their agenda this summer to grant that special permit?
No, no, I, it gets a little complicated. It's not quite that simple, but...
Okay.
It's one of the things that hasn't happened, but there are several things that have to happen.
Okay.
And it really, it really comes down to the building owner or property owner going through the process. I mean, basically, Rob can say, "Here's a path, but you've got to make the applications, and you've got to apply for the permits," and so...
One of the issues there is when we have inexperienced property owner, this is kind of a new endeavor for them, and it's a learning curve. That's become a little more interesting for them.
Well, let's give him a sinker, maybe he can hit that one.
So, in terms of the zoning and multifamily, you're going to be seeing the prospective members of the zoning bylaw committee later tonight, but also, Rob has been in contact with Land Use Council again, a little bit about changes, and there is a recommended change. It's probably going to be part of a larger package for, likely at the annual town meeting in May, but it's a starting point. I put it in the hopper for the town meeting, and obviously, once the bylaw committee starts meeting, I'll get that to them. Rob's working with Land Use Council on that. Fieldstone Farms and the gazebo, if the board remembers, Fieldstone Farms had built a two-story gazebo on the property, they didn't get the necessary permits to do that. Rob had mentioned to them, had said to them previously, it cannot be used until you get all the permits lined up, this includes ADA access and things like that. So, nothing's happened, the permits haven't been applied for, or the waivers haven't been applied for and such. So, Rob just sent them another note, basically saying, "Hi, just to remind you, you can't use it, and I haven't heard from you." No, no action by the board's necessary, we're not tearing the thing down or anything, but just want the board to know that that's still, in essence, is an unresolved issue.
So, may I ask you, Charlie, can we have somebody go on a day of a horse show and see if it's being used?
See if it has been used.
Is that something that the...
The building inspector could go out, for instance, or I might go out with him. You could do something like that.
Would that be okay? Because I know that it's gone on for quite a bit.
It's been over, it's been over a year, it's a public event, everybody knows that.
Yeah. And, you know, I think that our building inspector has been pretty clear with Mr. Clausen, the steps that the architect has to make in order to certify that building to be used, and that still hasn't happened. I think that we've been more than generous with our time and direction to Mr. Clausen, that it's certainly time for him to...
Just for a point of clarification, the original permit was pulled for a single-story structure, and then when you went out to do the inspection, it was a two-story structure.
Yes.
School repair project, this isn't a surprise, this is something that we knew all along that was going to have to be examined, but when the windows and such were put in originally, back in, for instance, when the expansion was done in the 90s and earlier, one of the things was that you had asbestos that was used that's not friable. It's not the ones that the park will start flowing. It's encapsulated as part of the frame and such around the window. But, nevertheless, when you're doing a building project, especially when you're now ready to replace the windows, you need to have asbestos remediation there, then you have to have someone follow up and make sure it's being done properly. In this case, what we're having is Vertex will do this for about $14,000. Not, they're not doing the removal...
They're going to observe.
They're observing, as part of their own project management.
This is mostly the caulking, you're talking about.
Right.
I'm in the wrong business, right?
I did approve the contract with them, as sort of the manager for the project, he's turned town hall, but I would like the board to approve the contract also, just so it's on the record.
As a change order?
In essence, it's, it's, in essence, you know, it's more a separate contract, a change order.
So, do I have a motion to approve the contract for the asbestos?
And it'll be for $13,790, so move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we need to sign anything?
No, I already signed it.
Okay, for a move.
Cranberry Drive sidewalk, I'm going to have the traffic committee, Traffic Safety Committee meet about this, along with a few other things. In a couple of weeks, we had a resident who asked if it was possible to take, we have the two entrances for Cranberry Drive, they're on Plymouth Street. The east one, that's where the sidewalk ends, at 106. Then, of course, it continues along Cranberry Drive, up into the loop and back down again. The problem is that the two entrances aren't connected by a sidewalk. So, if you want to walk the entire loop once, you have to walk on the shoulder of the road on Plymouth Street, which isn't the greatest thing to be doing. So, the resident asked if a sidewalk could be put in. Certainly, we have enough space in terms of a right-of-way, it's just a matter of cost more than anything else. Maybe a couple of things might have to be moved, a tree might have to come down or something like that, along the shoulder. But, it's something I'll bring to the Traffic Safety Committee, we're not doing anything right now. What I really would like to do is have Steve get an engineer to give us a cost estimate as to how much it costs, and then the town eventually can make a decision whether they want to do something like that. And we are now at 7:45 approximately. The revocation hearing for Evergreen, which is the Twin Lakes Liquor Store. We've continued, been continuing with this revocation hearing as payments are being made for back taxes. I had a report from the Collector's Office that they continue to meet that schedule. So, what I'm recommending to the board is that they continue that this hearing that we've been having for another two months, I believe, this is my, there's a date, I think I put it in. It's going to be the last meeting in August. Oh, I think I had...
I'll get my calendar, I have a calendar right here. So, that would be on August 27, I mean, sorry, 28.
Okay.
So, do I have a motion that we continue them to August 28?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we'll do that, I'll inform Evergreen that they'll remain in good standing, but we're continuing the revocation hearing. I did check with the Collector's Office on Davis Automotive, I'm going to get this confirmed, but unfortunately, it doesn't look like they have continued making payments, so I'll probably schedule a hearing with them for the second meeting in July. I have to give notice at least two weeks in advance, so I can't do it for two weeks from now, so I'll do it for four weeks from now. It's not an emergency, but we'll get everything set up. Virtual Town Hall, which is the firm that makes, does the support for the town's website, they've been sold or bought out, or whatever you want to put it, to another firm that does a similar type of work called Civic Plus, they have their own platform, but the correspondence I received from Virtual Town Hall at Civic Plus was there won't be any changes or anything like that. Now, it wouldn't surprise me if sometime in the future, whether it's a year or three years or whatever from now, Civic Plus is going to say, "Well, you know, we're ending our support for the Virtual Town Hall platform, you need to move the website to Civic Plus, we'll see what the costs are like and everything like that." And, but nothing, I wanted the board to be aware of it at least, not for the board needs to take any action about it. Pegged access channels, there's a bill before the legislature that requires that the cable companies ensure that pegged channels are near the broadcast channels in their channel lineups, which they are here in Halifax, as far as we know, still.
13, 14, 15.
Provide a high-definition signal for the broadcast, include them in the electronic programming guide. What I'd like to do is contact Area 58, what I read was a copy, basically an opinion piece about the bill. I'd like to hear from Area 58, since I don't get cable here, in essence, I have no idea whether it's, in fact, in high definition or not, and also whether it's in the electronic guide or not, but I'll check with Area 58 if that's okay. Building mates and rebuilding of the podium, Building Mates Department plans on building a new podium, as the one that the town has used for a number of years is in poor shape. It's really not owned by anybody, in the sense of, when we do the inventory list, all the objects in the town hall, for instance, is supposed to have somebody who's responsible for them, because it's up in the Great Hall, and the Great Hall's not a department, it never made it on anybody's inventory list, so, but...
The maintenance part of it wasn't done.
So, Scott Turner had contacted me about replacing it, he's going to build a new one. I don't think it's going to be tomorrow or anything, but again, something the board, I want to make sure the board is aware of that. And when it comes in, we can at least, you know, have Scott and the staff come in, and we can thank them for that work. Mrs. Zorris obviously didn't make it tonight, I'm not sure what happened again.
That's too bad.
Yep. Burge Pond, this is, I believe, the last step in the process, or at least at our end, for the acceptance of the full settlement. The board met with...
Friday.
Friday.
It was Friday, the...
12th.
Yes, thank you.
Friday morning at 10:30?
Town Hall.
Town Hall.
Joan.
Joan Pierce.
Yes.
Joan Rivers.
Came to an agreement, so there are two copies for the entire board to sign of the acceptance of the full agreement at $197,500.
Tom has a question.
Well, I, I thought I was okaying the sale for $197, but I didn't know I was accepting full settlement necessarily, of the original agreement.
Yeah, I mean, this is where it's laid out at $197,500, that's what we're selling.
Yes, and I think what Tom's talking about is Joan had talked about having a letter that discussed the other piece of land that she was going to pursue.
Well, no, I, it, by reference, it's saying that this is full settlement of the original agreement to give us $150,000 in cash and $250,000 in land.
And you don't think that they should be tied in?
Well, I, I...
No, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
I mean, we're taking less than the $250,000 because of whatever circumstances are.
Right, do we kind of want that in the agreement? Because I think she was going to put in the agreement something to the effect of, we recognize, or, I don't know if it was going to be a cover letter, but it was going to be, we recognize that this...
Let's have somebody else read this at the same time.
That we recog, thank you, Charlie, that we recognize that, you know, this was not part of the original amount, because we had conveyed to you the wrong frontage.
Yeah, my understanding of it was that she was going to try to make us whole, but then admit that we would have to put another piece of property in.
Well, that may still be something we do in the future, but it's not...
So, I don't know if that has any, any attachment to this one, because it's a separate deal.
Was there a cover letter with this, Charlie, perhaps?
No, there's a backup to that, but that's, I don't consider that a cover letter or anything.
Okay.
I didn't walk away that night thinking that we were acknowledging anything other than we were willing to sell it for $197,500, it's not necessarily that it was in full settlement.
Well, I don't know what the full, I mean, I think the full settlement, and I might be wrong, you can read the letter, is, is more, is that particular parcel in the sense of, if the state's taking it by eminent domain, and it's mentioned there that we accept them $197...
Okay, I...
No further action will be taken.
I just recoiled because of my sensitivity to the whole thing.
Yes, well, rightfully so.
Well, that's why we got you.
Rightfully so.
Every, every board that meets a...
I'm not calling you a cynic.
Yeah, just because I'm paranoid doesn't mean they're not out to get me.
Well, it's rightfully so, I mean, you certainly have lived 20 years with the same issue coming up, so...
Well, we haven't gotten that far.
16.
16 and three-quarters.
Working on it.
And mine started back further than that.
But I know you could...
I mean, if we're acknowledging the damages...
Yes.
Because of the, we agreed to do it by eminent domain to accelerate the program, you know?
Yes.
That, that's fine, I just...
You've got to sign it, young man.
I didn't want to be saying that...
We're happy.
We're happy, yeah, exactly.
Right, and so look for that letter from Joan, Joan is going to follow up with the letter where she is going to...
Well, the inspector is going to be cleaning tomorrow.
She's going to come in first thing tomorrow morning, because she wants to grab this paperwork, because she has to...
Hand drop off a check, right?
Yeah, so don't get anything to do with it. And I also have a certified vote on that, the 15, and then we have a certified vote of the town meeting, that article, so I came with those two.
Yes.
So, she's going to come in for us in tomorrow morning, so if you guys want to meet her.
With a check and...
Okay, so Charlie will make sure she drops off the check.
All three of us will be waiting in the hallway.
Yeah.
Not that I don't trust fishery's game, but...
Well, I don't know, are, are we actually, I'm not joking, I don't expect that she's going to check.
She'll be holding check in hand.
No, we won't have it.
Not until they get this paperwork signed and everything before they fill the check out.
I do need a motion that we sign this document, though. May I have a motion? Because we're signing it.
But I just signed it.
No, I know, but can I have a formal motion?
I move that we sign the agreement between the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Town of Halifax for set property.
Do I have a second, Charlie?
I'll give you a very reluctant second.
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, I know, I don't know, I think we gave you an update on that meeting, that she had identified another piece of property in Aldena.
No, well, that, the parcels of Aldena have been ones that you all discussed previously, were with her when she met with you a couple of weeks ago, for instance.
So, she is to send the Town of Halifax a letter confirming our conversation, that she will pursue that in fiscal...
Send very fast.
Good, well, yeah, we'll look for the letter then. We've still got a few minutes.
Where'd you sign it?
There's not a signature page.
Yes, there is.
Where?
You know, one of them has a few more pages than the other because it's a bad...
Okay, well...
Don't confuse me, no, it's easy.
Visiting Nurses Contract, this is one copy for the chair to sign for the agreement between the World Visiting Nurses Association and the Board of Health.
Do I have a motion?
Well, actually, no.
For all of us?
All three of you, yes.
Just to sign that, all those in favor?
Did I, was there a yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Line transfers, $8,000 from insurance to law, $1,500 from trash collection hazardous waste, $700 from treasurer clerical, the treasurer tax title, $14,000 from special needs tuition, special needs transportation, $20,000 from special needs tuition, elementary school HES expenses. I didn't want to give an asterisk on that last one. Our agreement unwritten with the elementary school and the Civil Light Administration is that if they had a surplus in special ed, that they return it to the town. What they're indicating in the note that went with the last request for the last transfer is that this is needed because the regular day special education budget, which is contained in the regular HES budget, not the special ed budget, is over, is running over budget, and that's why they need the $20,000 that they are...
Did they do an explanation of why it was over budget?
Um, I can't, let's see. What they said is, uh, let's see, no, this. Reason for projected deficit in this count, there's been increase in special ed contracted service costs for 2018. Special ed contracted services, it's included in the regular day category.
Okay.
That's the limit of what I got.
Thank you.
I mean, I saw this and said initially, then there's, legally, there's not, legally, they have every right to go ahead and do it, even without the board's permission and permission. But, we, both sides have held, not held in a bad way, but, you know, we follow that agreement. If there's, as long as the money's going in the special ed, coming out of special ed and going into another special ed, then I understand that.
Right, and I know that I missed Gordon Andrews' first school committee meeting, but I heard that he was asking specific questions, which is good, because, you know, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, so if the board would vote to approve these, and their signatures, and I'll get these by and to be for the ones that by and to be not signed yet.
Do I have a motion, please, line up a transfer?
Second.
Yeah, I should move them.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Recycling Grant, we have a grant application assigned to publicize good practices recycling, such as, especially dealing with the plastic trash bags, both the smaller ones and the larger ones, in the sense of, people can't recycle, and you can bring those ones that you get at Stop &amp; Shop back to Stop &amp; Shop. They have specific containers at Stop &amp; Shop to bring those plastic one-use bags that people get when they get their groceries. But you can't put them in, you're recycling with the newspapers or anything like that, nor should you take your recyclables, put them in a large plastic bag, because that's not recyclable, and we're not going to empty out the street or something like that. So, the recycling, Susan Johnson Recycling Company has a grant to do a lot of publicity, mailings out to residents, and it's not just the plastic bags issue, there are other things. This is all in connection, I think the board's aware of, the increase in problems, not just here in Halifax, it's in general, about being able to get recyclables to the market and have that market accept them, because of contamination problems. Basically, non-recycled materials are getting into the recyclables.
So, we're not, we're not going to, they accept the bags anymore down the recycling center?
The plastic bags, I don't believe they have a container down there at the recycling center.
They do.
They do. They've been taking them.
Okay, well, then maybe, again, that might be part of the literature that Susan's giving out.
Okay, because I just took them down this past there.
Then, then there's a box there, but what you can't do is mix it with all the other recyclables.
Oh, no.
But some people do that. You're good, you don't do that.
Well...
I mean, we did the same thing at home, you know, and...
I can't say it's a camera, I won't.
No, we have, we have a special bag of bags, in essence, and when we go to the supermarket, No, we have, we have a special bag of bags, in essence, and when we go to the supermarket, we bring a bag of bags with us and put it in the separate container at the supermarket.
Bag of bag?
So if the board would authorize the chair to sign the grant application, not application, no, grant agreement.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
And, you know, one more minute. Just on the Council on Aging and Pope's Tavern project, I did talk to the building inspector. There were a question arisen about if we're trying to lower some of the cost of the project, at least immediate cost, whether we can delay doing the parking lot work. He said yes, but it would then end up with having the building having a temporary occupancy permit. Since in the long run, we need to have the handicap spaces and such, basically, we're gonna have to meet the parking lot requirements.
Yes, but I was thinking that perhaps, you know, that wouldn't be part of the budget, but it could be part of the highway department budget so that it could be done at the same time. That was my hope.
Yeah, I don't know what the cost is for the parking lot, such in the sense that Steve may, you know, if Steve has already been allocating the money for actual road projects, the cost of doing the parking lot may just be prohibitive within his own budget.
Who could bring the plan to Steve to get just an estimate?
You know what, sign this?
For the
Uh, she does.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I think you did.
I did.
She signed it.
I gave it back to him.
We should, I should be able to get a set of plans from the architect, either, either electronic ones or paper ones.
Okay.
I can do that.
Because it would be great if we knew that. Did the building committee set their next meeting?
I'm not aware. I know progress is being made towards, I think now the expectation is we're gonna go out to bid the first half of July with bids coming in the second, the first half of August.
Well, that's, that's what they said at the meeting, so hopefully it goes through.
Okay, all right.
And this, and on the Congregational Church, I know that members from the Council on Aging had met with members of the Congregational Church at that night of the building committee. Nothing got resolved in the sense of it was the first meeting of parties. I followed up with an email to the Congregational Church, which was acknowledged, saying, hi, you know, we may remain interested. We thank you for, you know, thinking about this as a possibility. Please tell me the next time folks are meeting, we'd like to be there.
But this is sort of deceiving because it says I did receive an acknowledgement, but I haven't heard anything more.
Right.
Acknowledgement means that
Well, I think
Well, simply at least I, I know that somebody read the email.
Right, and I think that, you know, that when the Council on Aging went over, that they, the church had mentioned there may be some expenses involved. And Charlie wants to make sure that they are aware that we, we plan on, you know, assisting them.
We don't think we're going in there for rent free.
Right, that we would certainly be covering the expenses.
Put some donation box.
Well, the, when they move the basket back and forth.
Just don't take the money out, put it in.
Yeah.
So, we are eight o'clock.
Yes, it is eight o'clock, and we have Powers &amp; Sullivan, our audit firm.
Well, our prospective, yes.
Our prospective.
So generally, if I come on up for the front row.
And then you could introduce yourself on camera, I know that we've
Just to explain again to our TV audience, the town has an annual audit done. We've, you had looked at the possibilities, if we sit, we had looked at the possibility of hiring a new audit firm. We looked at our old audit firm also. We had a review committee interview three firms, including Powers &amp; Sullivan. And the committee recommended that the board, to the board, that Powers &amp; Sullivan be hired to do the next three audits for the town. However, it's up to the board to make that decision. The board signs that contract and allow them to come in and, if, at the very least, do a meet and greet by a little bit more substantial.
I, I wanna see them do the new math first. Do the kids new math there, all right.
So if you wanna introduce, introduce yourself.
That would be great.
My name is Craig Peacock. I'm a partner with the firm of Powers &amp; Sullivan. Frank Soretti, I'm also a partner with Powers &amp; Sullivan.
And so if you wanna just give us a brief overview, I know that our committee was quite impressed that you do a lot of municipal work, so if you just wanna talk briefly about it.
Yes, as a firm, we've been in business twenty-seven years now, of which Frank and myself have been with the firm for a little over twenty-three years now. We primarily, we're a Massachusetts firm, we focus on municipal governmental entities, cities, towns, school districts, collaboratives, that is what we do. We have what we consider a great bench strength in our office, meaning that we have six partners. Since we've responded to the RFP, we now have three managers and three supervisors. Everybody is a hundred percent on board, I would, with being in the governmental arena. I would suggest that ninety-eight percent of our revenues over the last twenty-five years have been primarily from this arena. This is what we do. We are down, we, our office may be in Wakefield, but we're down this way quite often. There's a number of clients around here that we do work with. We take pride as a firm, we're very active in working with the AICPA, the MSCPA, the DSE, the Department of Educat, you know, Education, Secondary Education. We try to stay abreast of all the upcoming issues. We are constantly working with the GASB to get a feel for the new GASBs coming up and the how and what that will mean for changes to a community such as the Town of Halifax's financial statements. We try to stay the forefront of that and be a firm that helps to implement and help, helps to determine the best way to implement. We also have meetings at our office quite often with, where other audit firms come in to speak and we also collaborate to make sure we're on the same page. Our founding partners have been in this industry, I have twenty-three, they've been a little over thirty years. We started working with the state and, you know, again, we're primarily in Massachusetts, only in Massachusetts. We are a hundred percent paperless. What you'll find is, as a firm, our goal is to add value. We feel that anybody could come in and work with your finance team and compile a set of financial statements. Clearly, the first year through, we have to gain an understanding of your internal controls, the way things are done within the Town of Halifax and such. And from there on, we're able to gain efficiencies in the audit. And I mentioned we're a hundred percent paperless, and what that also means to all of your financial staff is that most of what they're already doing in Excel or from a report that can come from your general ledger, those are the types of things that we're gonna ask for. We try to eliminate binders of paper as well, so we're scanning everything in. Our team will show up, we all have laptops and routers to the internet and scanners, you know, we have everything we need, we're all self-contained. We have never missed a deadline. We pride ourselves. We also do a lot of what we call CAFRs, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I know your RFP mentioned financial by the end of December. That is also the deadline for the CAFR reports, of which we do quite a few of them within the state of Massachusetts. So we, our management team has worked really hard to develop internal policies and procedures in which multiple sets of eyes get to see every report. Even the Town of Halifax not being a CAFR, it would go through myself and our team in the field, as well as Frank back in the office. And we're looking for, I think the benefit of having six partners is that you're not just working with, say, Craig Peacock or Frank Soretti. We collaborate within the office. We work together. We all have the same goals as far as the quality of our final product. We will work with your departments to look for management letter comments that can add value, that can help to maybe make a process more efficient, more effective. We try to look at management comments that we potentially would feel should be, you know, again, really quick. It only has to go in writing if something has, is a significant efficiency or material weakness. Clearly, if we found anything in that realm, we'd bring it to the board's attention right away to discuss the best way to handle that. If it's simply efficiency comments, maybe we can do this a little better, information flow, that type of thing. We, we try to come up with comments that will add value to a process within the town. And again, one thing I always like to say is we will, we're only human as well. So when we come into a new office, sometimes I might misinterpret something that's said to me. And we may say, oh, that could be management. We will make sure that things, all of our reports come out in draft, and we discuss all the management comments long before it would make it to a public document. Because, again, we have to make sure that our facts are correct as well. So, the bottom line to that is we will never blindside the town with comments. We're here to work together, to, to work as a team, to assist the town with their, their, clearly, financial statements are priority number one. But again, we work to gain efficiencies so that we can add value and assist the town in making decisions on debt. Again, we can't make management decisions and establish management policy, but we can certainly consult and work with you on those decisions and policies. Lastly, I think what I'll say is we're very knowledgeable and we work quite a bit with all of your actuaries, you know, the actuaries. I know, I believe Parker Elmore, you guys work for OPEB. I know that you guys have early implemented GASB seventy-five, so where that's coming up for a lot of new clients this year. We'll be able to work with Parker to make sure that the continuing disclosures are met and that, you know, your, your financials clearly have an unmodified opinion. And, you know, we're always open to suggestions. I mean, I think we have developed a really strong and efficient internal process. However, I think what I like about my career in, in this arena is that it's, it's exciting to come and work with different people such as yourselves and move around because hopefully, you all are learning or the town, you know, we're able to add value to the town, but quite frankly, all of you add value to us in our procedures as well. We're all in this, in this industry together. Most communities are very similar in some ways, and then it depends on, you know, the tax base and so on, of what type of reserves you can put aside, the debt level you have and that type of thing. But those are the areas that we like to work with and get involved and help, you know, help the community make some decisions that will foster your, your debt rating and/or your reserves to hopefully grow over the years.
Awesome. Awesome. So, Craig, thank you so much, Craig. That was very nicely done.
In depth. And just one question I have, who locally are you dealing with?
We deal, so down here, we have Lakeville, Cover, a little bit off the side, we have Abington, Plymouth, Marshfield. We are all on the Vineyard, we're down the Cape, we're out west. I would suggest, based on cities, towns, school districts, collaboratives between our six partners, we're probably over a hundred clients at this point. I'd like to say that we have many audits, myself personally, that I've been working on for twenty-three years. And it's, I think it's, we've been able to, what I'll call weather the storm through various administrations along the way. And I think that's because of our approach. We're continually getting emails from our clients about our team and the level of professionalism that they bring. We're not here to, we know that we're here maybe two weeks out of the year or so, and your financial team have, you know, their own agendas and work to do, so we don't come in a toe of the honey, we need, we need, we need. We're here to work together. We try to be proactive. And weeks in advance, we will send selections and such so that your teams have time to pull the information needed. So, one that, that helps both. I think it gives your team more and ample time to pick the selection, excuse me, as well as it allows us to come out and hit the ground running.
Hit the ground running.
You know, and so it doesn't have to be as burdened, you know.
Yeah.
If I could say it that way, some, you know, some clients enjoy, we come in for a few days and finish off back at the office as well. So we're very, very flexible, and we're looking to establish the relationship with the Town of Halifax. And we get to know each other and learn the, you know, different, how you guys like things done and how we're very flexible to kind of mold to that. And I think we've, over the twenty-seven years, we've had, what I'd like to say, very positive feedback from our clients.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Any further questions? The financial team met with both these gentlemen a few weeks ago, and we were very impressed by the support that they give the town because they are driven in the arena of towns and cities, that they, they know the different things that we're facing and they understand, you know, how the dynamics of the financial teams work. We got great feedback from the customers that you now service. And it is the recommendation of the financial team that we appoint Powers &amp; Sullivan as our audit for the next three years.
Well, it sounds as if they're, they have Central Plymouth County and the Cape covered, which touches on a lot of towns that we compare our, when we do our salary, you know, stuff, things, we compare them to, so if they're dealing with them and they got the same type of, many of those towns you talk about got the same problem. They're not commercially established, they're basically a dead room community, and I think that works for them.
So Craig will be here, you will be the main eye.
I will be, as we call, the onsite partner.
Yes.
So I will work with the team that's in the field to conduct the audit and help along. And Frank is what we call the concurrent partner in our office. Once reports are done, we go through an internal control process on our own to assure that our eyes are dotted and tees are crossed and all reports meet proper
Quality control.
GASB, yeah, that type of thing, a very good quality control process.
Right, and it's that partnership that we felt comfortable with as well. So thank you, Frank.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You now realize that you can lay claim to representing the heart of some of the county, right? Because we
We are, we are, we are geographically the center.
It was sort of shaped like a heart on it, sort of tilted.
Excellent, excellent.
Well, if you're looking for a motion, I move that we
Wait, Powers &amp; Sullivan.
Allow Power and Sullivan to be our next audit team.
For the next three years.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
Welcome aboard, thank you so much. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for the opportunity, very excited to work together with your financial team. Thank you again.
And the next time you guys come down, dress down. I don't want anybody dressing down.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, safe travel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so back to a few other things on the mail. McDonald Industries.
Oh, yes.
We're gonna set up a public presentation for the project proposing over at the Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Halifax Town Lines on the south side of the street at the site of the old landfill.
Is that where it is?
Yes.
That's where the presentation is?
No, 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 not the presentation.
Oh.
The site of the project is, no.
No, because we, we gave
We're gonna get a big screen and some, people can bring beach chairs and
No, I know, you had me frightened there for a second. When you sent me the request and the data, I made some kind of funny gesture.
It's already the highest point in Halifax.
We're not gonna meet down in Mount Halifax.
Okay, because it's not the most exciting material.
No, this is the most exciting term. But there's two elements to this that may be of interest to Halifax. One is, for some people in the area, they may have noticed, there's been for several years now, a constant stream of truck traffic going in and out. And they've been bringing in fill to slowly raise the areas on the project site. And eventually, what they wanna do is there's part of it's in over on the Bridgewater line, part of it's over on the Halifax line, is there's a swale. Usually, people think of a swale as just a little channel
I wouldn't know what a swale was, Charlie.
Okay, for drainage purposes.
Drainage purpose.
Here, the swale is, think of it as a valley between two hills. So, what they've been doing is spilling swale and also leveling off the two landfills. And what will happen after that is that a solar project is planned.
Yes.
Very, very large, larger than the one on the Plente line. But as part of the fill project, they will be bringing in types of materials that are regulated by DEP. How they get permits from the Board of Health and DEP, we want the townspeople to be aware of it because McDonald Industries is looking for support from both towns, Bridgewater and Halifax for the project. Before we move forward in terms of any support letters and such, we wanted to give the townspeople an opportunity to hear about the project, to ask questions, any concerns and things like that. That is all scheduled for the end of July, on the thirtieth at seven o'clock, it'll be up in the Great Hall. We'll do some more publicity, we'll have some presentation materials available on the town website before that date. And, you know, we'll mention on Facebook and the newspapers and everything else.
Have we formally invited our, like, department and committees that may be
Not yet, because we just were getting the date and time files. And also, I want to, again, have the materials in hand so that if I, you know, send a note out to everybody, I can say, the materials are right there.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, Fire Department, one eleven F, we have a request by the fire chief of one eleven F, status firefighter Paul Gallagher, for an injury occurred on June thirteenth. He's expected to return to duty on Thursday, June twenty-eighth, so this covers medical bills and wages for this time period.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
We have a request for the town administrator for carryover of vacation from, sort of, the eighty hours that the board previously approved to ninety-six hours from fiscal eighteen, fiscal nineteen.
Do I have a motion?
Move it.
I wanna know if you're gonna be able to take seven weeks next year.
I have two weeks scheduled already this summer. I have a week scheduled in May of nineteen, a week in twenty. There'll be a loose week in a sense of a day here, a day here.
That's five.
So that's five, so I have to find room somewhere for another two.
Just checking.
What will I do, Charlie?
I'm gonna stay on the porch, that's what I'm doing.
The Robs will undertake some.
I already had, I had people already cuss me in the halls and all that stuff.
I have a motion, do I have a second for the carryover?
Second.
I made the motion, I'm sorry.
I seconded it.
All those in favor?
Just in here.
Aight, aight.
We did get more information about this opioid litigation that's been ongoing with other communities. I know the board had previously, having heard from the chiefs, that there was very little interest in pursuing this, but I just wanted the board to be aware that this had come in the mail, if for some reason you wanna take another look at it, the board could. School project, as we're gonna have a possible change order on this siding project, we did find some termite damage. It's old termite damage, in the sense of there are no termites present at that location. In fact, the school has an irregular eradication program for pests like the termites. But some of the frame's gonna have to be replaced along the siding, so we'll probably get a change order for that since that wasn't part of the original.
We're about on the same
I do not know.
Building, you know.
I do not know, I can find out.
And we don't know how much that would be.
We don't. In fact, that's why, this is a proposal request that's being sent from the architects to the contractor to get a cost estimate. I'll find out, however, where that actual work is going to be done.
Charlie, do you know if the architect or if Scott's gonna be sending you a refill report on that?
I don't know, I will find out. Then on the state zoning bills, there's, this has been going on for a number of years, though it looks like there's a great chance that though it looks like there's a great chance that the state may pass some bills regarding Chapter 48. The major changes would be that communities would be able to approve some types of zoning amendments, being changes to the bylaws that will relate to smart growth by a simple majority town meeting, rather than a two-thirds majority, and that the ZBA could then also approve special permits related to those types of developments by a simple majority, so three votes rather than four votes. The way I read the legislation is, there's no exceptions to it, in the sense of towns can do this, but it's not a situation where a community could say, "Well, we like, we appreciate that you want to give us that opportunity to do it by a simple majority, but we prefer going with the standard two-thirds that we do for everything else." The legislation doesn't read that way. It reads that, once it's changed, that if a town wanted to change a bylaw in this subject area, it could do it by a simple majority. I can print out a copy of the legislation for the board, so the board could read it for the next couple of weeks for the next selectmen's meeting, the board could decide, we're not going to take a position.
This has already come out of committee, or?
It's, it's, I don't know, but it's still sitting with the committees, it's in wage and means, but I think there's, because the weeks are going by before the legislature ends, I think there's a push, because it's been, they've been trying to do a zoning bylaw change bill for a number of years, and I guess there's more of a push this time. So, that's why I wanted the board to be informed about this, and if the board at some point wanted to contact its legislators, that it could do so, but I have copied the bill for the board to read if they want to, the board could decide to do nothing, whatever, I mean, by either way.
Other than there's the change that you've mentioned here, by majority voting, does that harm our efforts to make the changes in zoning bylaws, or does it...
No, it doesn't make anything, it doesn't change anything else for us, in a sense of a normal, a change in most of the bylaws. So, for instance, if we wanted to rezone, change the zoning map, still requires a two-thirds vote. You wanted to add a new use to the commercial district, still a two-thirds vote. It's very particular about the subject matter that would only need a simple majority.
Thank you.
Just on the fire department EMS shared services with Plinton, just shortly, I know that you had met with the town of Plinton yesterday. The result of that was that we're going to have a joint meeting with the Plinton Board Selectmen on July 12th at 6:00 PM in the Great Hall. I'll get, make sure that people here are aware of it, you know, like the finance committee or anybody else that needs to know.
Yes, that would be great. And also, I just wanted to mention too, that Jason and I, and John Trainer and Lance Benjamina will be meeting on July 9th during the day, to sort of, we have that draft of the interministerial agreement, and we also had put together some figures of a formula, so we're just going to sort of go through those, so that we're all prepared to present that to the board on the 12th.
Lyndy's general story, as you remember, a few weeks ago, the building inspector had had to put a stop order on the work that was not permitted, and they had not gotten the permits. I'm not sure, Rob, if anything, you were there, I know this afternoon, I don't know if anything...
Do I can update?
Yeah, if you could.
We received a phone call from a tenant on the second floor, which I'm not aware of. The complaint was that one of the means of egress in this addition, when they were putting on, on permitted, had closed off a door. So they now only have one means of egress, they've taken the second one away. I was unaware of that, obviously, so talked to the store owner, I have a meeting with a representative tomorrow at 8:30. My contention is, you're putting these people in harm's way. If you don't fix it immediately, then I'm going to have to take some action.
Wow.
And also, they had not actually, I don't, they had not gotten the other permits they needed.
They had not gotten any permits.
They still haven't even asked that?
Are these the new owners of the property?
They have demo permits, right?
I gave them two options, they can either remove what they put on, or they can go through the process to get it done immediately. I found that to be burdensome, and probably unlikely to happen based on the shape of the lot and the subject system and whatnot. So their contention was, they were going to come to me, I says, "If you come to me, I want a demolition permit," followed up by a permit to close up the back wall of the tunnel.
Now, just a question, are these new owners of the property in there?
I think they're fairly, how long, I'm not sure, two or three years possibly.
So there are apartments above Lyndy's? Did they need a special permit for that?
I'm going to have to investigate.
I've never knew that.
As far as my visits there, yes, it would indicate there's an apartment or more above Lyndy's.
Right, which would mean they would need a special permit of some sort, of the ZBA.
And I would have to have some sort of proof, the burden proof on them, as to when it went in, how it went in, and some records and whatnot.
Oh, okay.
I have not seen anything in my files of what I've found.
So Rob, how do we make it, like, force them to do it in a timely fashion?
Well, I can start finding them, but going to court, I don't know how quick that would be, or if that's going to happen, I mean...
Do they seem...
My concern at this point is, we've got an unprotected tenant upstairs.
No, I understand.
So, that needs to be done immediately, and if I, if I need to talk to Tom Council on that, we'll force that immediately.
Okay.
The other stuff will have to be in a timely fashion, and how we do that, I'm going to hopefully find out tomorrow morning.
And this is why it's important for people to pull permits, because there are safety issues involved, and there are rules to be followed, and you just can't do whatever you want. Sorry.
You're right, I mean, I know, you know, for a lot of people, they, what, they would rather be able to do what they want with their property without any regulation by the town, but many times, the regulations of town houses, or bylaws of towns, the state building code, are there for not to simply, "Hey, let's regulate," you know, because we like regulation, it is in fact for the health and safety and wellbeing of the people using the building, not, you know, whether it's tenants, whether it's business owners, whether it's customers coming in. I mean, it's all set up really for protection for them. If it's not done, then, you know, we're all going to be in a heap of trouble.
Anybody have any other questions on that?
No.
Thank you.
You want to talk about the police chief search?
Okay, so, we have CM, the intern, working with me on the wage and personnel, and we also were working on the police, updating the police chief's job description. As you know, she, we were going to pull different job descriptions from the same 10 towns that we compare ourselves to, and in the meantime, we've got that, a lot of the research complete, we can make a formal presentation on our next meeting, but in the meantime, I spoke with Charlie about starting to hire, the process to hire the consultant in order to, you know, hire the chief. So we would hire the consultant, by then we would complete the job description, and then...
I should have RFP ready by the end of the week for going out to bid for a consulting firm, just like we did when we did the Fire Chief Assessment Center. This firm, which is not going to be the same firm, the folks who have done the Fire Chief Assessments, A, don't do police, and then B, is, I believe, the person who's in charge of that retired.
Right.
So, I'm going to be dealing with some new firm, but again, there are a number of them out there.
Did an excellent job, too, that they dealt with the police chief.
Yep.
And then on Duncan Doge, just a reminder to the board, I don't know if, was there a time?
It's 11 o'clock.
So Duncan Doge is having another opening day on...
A ribbon cut.
Yes, that's a ribbon cut, not 11 o'clock.
On Friday, June 29th.
Yeah.
And they're going to be making a donation to the youth soccer association at that time.
Did we tell them that they could give us a donation towards the fireworks ahead of time?
Do we have any road cuts or anything?
Uh, yeah, we do. Uh, let's see, is that a road open in 28 McCollum Street?
All right, yep, so we have 28 McCollum to install a new gas service with a four-by-six road cut tie and a four-by-30 road cut trench. We have...
Is this on White Island Road?
Nope, this is on 28 McCollum.
McCall.
McCollum Street. So we don't, I don't have anything saying that they needed this detail, where's that?
Yeah, but, if they do need this detail, and they need, the Highway Surveyor has new stipulations that are going to add into, attaching to all the road cuts.
Okay. Oh, what a great idea.
Yeah, so I have those, it'll be on the permits, they'll see attached.
Okay, perfect. I don't have a copy of the permit, I just have a copy of them now.
Here it is right here.
Okay.
The main concern for the Highway Surveyor is that the folks who have been doing the road cuts, when they're putting the fill back in, they've been using substandard fill, which will result, obviously, in, in the short term or long term, a substandard patch job. He's more concerned, obviously, when we're dealing with a road cut that goes across the street, but he's running into more and more problems that, in essence, if you put solid objects in as part of the fill, they're going to settle out, and you're going to have problems with that patch, and he doesn't want to have to be out there doing the repairs a year later.
Okay, so this is the one, so building inspector, trench permit, okay, we have one detailed police officer, the highway department is fine, water has signed up, and so has conservation.
But these new permits will have those stipulations attached.
This one, yeah, this one, yeah, right, this one's going forward, yeah.
Yes, yep.
But they'll have the stipulations attached to it from the Highway Surveyor.
Yeah, yeah. How, would you like to make a motion, do you have any other questions?
I was just going to ask, did the Highway Surveyor indicate that they would inspect the backfill?
I would have to expect that they would, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it didn't say that.
But they didn't ask for it.
I called for inspection, that's all I was asking about. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Then I would, Pam, could you put something in there, as, if it's not mentioned, Tom's idea is great, is that they specifically, before work, before the...
Backfill.
Once that's done, but not the patch itself is put in, that the Highway Surveyor be notified, so that the Highway Surveyor can go out and inspect the backfill, make sure it meets the, his standards.
And then we have to affirm two other road cuts.
And inspect, so you want him to put that side of that letter right there?
Well, I think, even if it's not in there right today, that we put it in the stipulations.
Then don't sign it, guys, I have to put anything in there.
Okay.
Or I, I can have him doing the, I can have, okay, just sign it, I'll have him doing the letter.
And then, oh, perfect. So I need a motion to affirm an approval that we, for 34 White Island Road for a four-by-six road cut, and a four-by-six road cut trench to install a new gas service.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I also need a motion to affirm the approval of a second road cut that happened for a four-by-six road cut, for a four-by-35 road cut trench at 27 Anawan Drive for a new gas service.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to do this on me?
Yeah, we can, we, anyway, we've got it nine o'clock, so we can handle the live entertainment comments a little later.
Sure, thank you. Hi, so it is 8:30, and we are here to, we are here to talk to the zoning bylaw.
To officially make appointments, and then also for a discussion sort of what their charge and what their interests are in terms of areas of the zoning bylaw that should suffer some review, I mean, probably the entire bylaw should suffer, but let's, let's pick a few.
I love your focus.
But yeah.
So each of these individuals rented joy at City, and they've danced and ends off.
This is like the A Team of zoning.
I would have thought they would have tackled me and dragged me out of that garage.
So we have Mr. Gordon Andrews from the planning board, and we have Mr. Melius from, Mark Melius from the planning board.
Dan?
Oh, yes, oh no, Dan Pesari.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
No, 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 I was just doing...
I didn't know if you were stalling, because you couldn't remember anything.
No, no, no. No.
It's kind of hard being to remember.
Thank you, though, for helping me out.
It all looked alike to her, we're trying to be a guy.
You know, I get confused with zoning.
And I thought it was a favor.
No, you...
You may very well be, but I...
He's like, he's like Yef Hugn lately, when he speaks, I'm like, wow. And then we have our building inspector, zoning enforcement.
And his name is?
Rob Pritchard.
I thought we had some other...
Alan Diaz from the Board of Health is also interested, you know, we did send out a note to everybody, it may be simply a conflict.
Yeah.
So if one of the board makes appointments, if they could have him to the list, please.
Perfect, all right.
Well, I think we should, you know, maybe help with some, some charge in this as well.
Are you a member of this?
Yes.
Yes, and Tom Melius.
Yeah, put me on there.
Yes.
See, that's why we need each other.
I'm not here.
It would just seem to me, because it's timely and relevant, that we start looking at some of the, let me back up a little bit. I've always contended, you can't do major bylaw review projects all at once, you've got to start someplace. I always mention things that are the most egregious at the moment, focus on that, and then move on to something else. Part of the problem is, you can't go to a town meeting and try to overwhelm people with a lot of zoning bylaw changes. Everybody will just say no, because they glaze over, and when in doubt, say no. And it just takes too long to educate everybody on a lot of different aspects of zoning. But I think it's clear, based on recent history and legal costs and all of that, that I think we need to pick a direction, whatever it is we want to go, for multifamily, multi-dwelling, there's a lot of conflict in that sections of bylaw, or sections of the bylaw. Let's figure out what we want to do, let's clean up the language, and let's present something that makes sense, and something that everybody seems to be in agreement, that's the direction we want to go in. I also recommend that we involve some counsel in this, because usually when you get in trouble with bylaws, it's because you did something wrong when you put it together, and I think it's better to get some advice before we go to town meeting, than deal with the repercussions after we've adopted something and then end up in some trouble. We could still end up in trouble, but at least we, at least we tried to do it with some common sense.
At least counsel will tell us that we didn't get in trouble when we do it.
Right, or at least give us some direction, and, you know, hopefully counsel knows the most recent case law, and how events have evolved in different cases and whatnot. So, that would be my recommendation, that we, we ask, I mean, obviously, the committee will take on its own life, but that would be an area I'd like to see focused on initially, at least one of the areas focused on initially, I'm not limiting it to that.
I know that there were several items that we talked, when we had joint meetings with zoning board, planning board, the board of selectmen, there were a couple of items that we had talked about leading up to town meeting, one of those articles was voted that sort of helped with the live entertainment issue that we were having.
And that's before the AG's office now, with the hope that the AG's office will get that approved later this summer, and we'll be able to move on.
But I know that there were other issues that we talked to, we talked about besides multifamily, that, you know, I don't know if it would help this particular board if we just have a bullet of priority of the things that we need to talk to, or we should just rely on the experts to come up with the lists for ranking.
It seems to me it would help if we had one thing to all focus on, if we have multiple people and everyone has a different agenda, I think it would be difficult to do anything in a timely manner, whereas if we could decide beforehand, I mean, the list is okay, but I think we should definitely have some sort of order, that way it keeps us all in track, we can all focus on the same thing.
But I agree with you, but I think that at the, your initial meeting, I know that if you, Charlie probably still has a different list of the things that we had talked about.
We dealt with a lot of the things we talked about, and tell me, in some cases, the things we talked about, you know, working through with Rob, we decided it was not a necessity, for instance, we talked about having some sort of bylaw about a building permit being needed, and I think we just, we said there was sufficient language in the current bylaw to cover that, as an example.
Yes, we, I mean, if you're talking about ongoing issues, we've got in-law apartments that are confusing.
Yes.
We should have a standard list of what do we want, and what are we going to afford, so we just...
And not be in conflict with the statute.
Yeah, and also, just for the, for in-laws as a topic, is whether, I mean, I know we did it 20 years ago, you know, it may, for whatever reasons, we were trying to solve a problem back then, and then looking at it now, 20 years later, saying, okay, is it in fact needed, in the sense of when we're talking about the in-law apartment, as we allow it right now, there's no difference between that and simply putting an addition now, there's no difference between that and simply putting an addition on a house, because you can have as many kitchens as you want, that according to, you know, this is by state statute, state building code. And shared space, okay, well, that's nice. I mean, if you've got an addition, you've got a shared space. So the question is, is whether that section of bylaw in fact is needed anymore.
I think, just from my own experience, if, because again, to your point, Charlie, if we're going to call it a single-family dwelling, we're going to have shared space. I think the main concern was, how is this going to be affected in the future? Is it going to be rented out? And how do we enforce that? And how do we protect anybody that might be in that section? But again, it's a single-family house and, you know, but do we want to have multiple people in there? Do we, so I think that was, like you said, the intent. How do we address that? Do we want to just still have in-law apartments? Do we want to just allow duplexes and two families? And I don't know. This is what we need to discuss, and which direction does the town want to go?
Right, and I also think that, you know, Mr. Pesari, and, you know, he can be key in figuring out what the need is as well, because, no, 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 because zoning things come, you know, the confusion of zoning comes before that board. And so certainly, in-laws has been a hot topic of confusion for residents.
I just felt on our first meeting to be an entire discussion on what we're going to discuss. I'd rather have some, some way to focus and some to start going.
I disagree, I think that you need to identify first, that all of the things that we talked about.
Well, this was my confusion when, when I first said that I had interest in this. I was hoping that beforehand, we could sit down in a room, because if there's kind of, I assume around a half a dozen of us, if we can't all agree on what we're going to discuss, then we're never going to get anything.
Right.
So if we could get that beforehand...
Right, so that's what we can talk about now.
But the thing is, we can talk about that now, but I tend to agree with it, and since that, you give them a mandate to solve one problem and solving that problem, and also may touch on other issues that are, that are already in the mix. You know, and then you know, the skills that you know develop in one, developing the results for one, can carry over to the next. If you go in with everybody having one, their own direction they want to go, you never, you never meet.
But I think you're looking for, for direction from our board as well.
Yeah, but I'm not a zoning person.
Only because it seems like we haven't all gathered, all the people that will be on this committee have not gathered and come up with an agenda. Or anything that we all believe should be the first thing that we have...
But it's being created by the board of selection for a need, so I think that it would be helpful for us also to give you direction. So Mr., Mr. Andrews, I think you have to...
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, you know, we're putting together a bylaw study committee, so, I mean, if you're going to say, this is the, the committee to do this bylaw, you know, you're making it so specific.
Right.
It should be open. Is this going to be a one-time committee, or is this something that you're looking to do, you know, this year, next year, and kind of keep things rolling?
My intent was never to do one thing. My intent was to leave this in play, but to, to address the things most egregious at the moment.
I mean, so don't, if we've got a 50-page bylaw, let's not look at all 50 pages. Look at, we've talked about multifamily, we've talked about in-laws. There may be specific topics that have generated either disagreements, a lot of discussion, a lot of questions, whatever, and say, we've got to work here, here, and here. I mean, we could be talking about any number of things. So for instance, should we enlarge or, the commercial zone, should we lessen some of the industrial zone in some of the areas and build it back in other areas? I mean, we can talk about cluster zoning and other smart growth things. And the first two things I've talked about are things I think, you know, at least the board may disagree with, but there's consensus that we've got to spend some time on those two areas. But I also invite everybody in to say, okay, are there other particular areas, not the entire bylaw, because no one's expecting anybody to look at that whole thing during the next year.
Right.
But let's pick, you know, four, five, six things and say, let's see whether we can get to a point of bringing something to the May 2019 town meeting during the intervening months.
Yes, and it may be, so that's why I was saying at the beginning that you, you would sit down and say, these are the things that we've identified. And then you can rank them, and you may only get one thing done, because depending on time and all that kind of thing.
You're going to have to have an organizational meeting.
Right.
First meeting's going to be organizational.
But I also see it as an ongoing.
Yeah, yeah, that's how I've always viewed it.
I don't see them solving all the issues in one, one setting or one year even, because if, one of the things that I would like to look at is people who are sitting on these boards now, what are the, what are the one, the pain in the butt issues that have come before your board that you've had, you've had problems with?
Great question. So I'd say, anyway, signage is an issue where it gets incredibly confusing for us to interpret all of those things. But I don't think it's the most pressing issue, and I don't think that that's where we should put our attention first.
But it's a red button, it's a red button issue, because I hear from all the stores and everybody else, put a sign out, I can't have it out this time.
Oh, the sign by law.
The sign by law.
Yeah.
It just, it just, I mean, it seems like multifamily would be far more important to tackle first.
That, and I think the, like, for me, the in-law, I hear a lot about the in-law in that whole gray area and people not being aware that they have to apply.
So since we all agree that there's multiple things, we all agree that we can't address them in one year, that's why I would like to get more focus.
Yep.
Well, again, I think that that's the kind of thing you develop at your first organizational meeting as a committee.
I was just concerned that if we can't all agree on what those things are now...
Then we can be the deal breakers.
All right.
Yeah.
So you see what I'm saying, when the six of us get in a room, if we can't all agree on what we're going to, we're never going to get anything done.
Yeah.
I'm like, I'm sure that time is well spent.
Yeah, and we'll be the deal breakers for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
We'll be the decider, you're not going to break it.
Well, Kim likes to break things.
I'm Italian.
Throw my dishes to the wall.
That's why we don't give her a camera.
Don't rustle for it.
I don't want to embarrass you, Mr. Pesari.
Mr. Andrews?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've been on the committee before, we've discussed things, and it's never really come to that, but I mean, we've had three members on the board. I mean, it'd be nice to have a board that's a little bit larger, and it looks like that's what you're looking at here. I'd really love to see somebody from the general public on the board as well.
Yeah, that was always the intent.
And I put that out at this meeting right now, anybody watching, you know, that would really be a welcome sight to see somebody step up and, you know, want to participate with us, because it feels like it's just the boards that are deciding these things.
Right.
And it makes you feel awkward, because, you know, if, if the general public doesn't have a concern with any of these bylaws, is there a need to change them? And that's, you know, that's what I'm saying. So if anybody's got any, please, you know, come forward, let us know.
Or if they want to be part of the process.
Or if they've got a complaint or an issue, I mean, there's, there's no other way to bring it out unless somebody steps up and speaks up. And we have room on the board, if some, I assume we have room on the board.
Yeah, yeah. It's all not board, it's up to the board to make the appointments.
But, like, again, I'm just putting a plea out to the general public, you know, please step up. I mean, I hear all kinds of complaints when something is done, that, you know, so-and-so is doing this or doing that, but here we are, looking for somebody. It's, it's a well-paying job, it's like most of the other jobs here.
I know.
That was low, Gordon.
Not being on one of these committees before, is, what's the structure? Is it going to be a chairman?
That's typically how it would happen, but that's where your first...
Do you have a vote when you're deciding things? Seconded? Is it, is it...
It's a formal, it's a real committee that has to post real meetings and has to, you know, have an agenda and motions made and things like that, yes.
That's a procedure, it's just like that.
Yeah, I mean, you don't, you know, I know various, depending on how the committees want, the members want to function, I mean, you can be as rigid as you want to, I don't recommend it in Halifax, because you're not approving specific permits or anything like that at a meeting.
It's a discussion, recommendations, yeah.
Well, in this discussion of how it's going to go and we're going to discuss, it's going to take that format anyway.
Yeah.
So I think it's going to find its seat, its floodwater is going to see its open level.
Right.
Yeah.
One other question to Charlie quite quickly. Where are we with the special permit renewals?
For what?
Special permits, the five-year.
Well, what's been decided? Because I'm getting confused. Well, that's real, I mean, this is me, and I, you know, mostly from talking with town council, with land use council. Well, there's, there's not a right answer, first of all. I think, having time for town council, Rob can correct me if I'm wrong, or, you know, how he sees it, what we've seen, is the general rule shouldn't be that you have timed permits in the sense of that they're up for renewal, as in starting from scratch, because if you do renewals, then you really, you've, when you do one five years ago, like with the in-laws. So in 2013, someone gets a special permit for an in-law, and it's for five years. They need to come back, this is the reason why we made the change this May, they have to come back and start afresh. There's no question about that. They have to have the hearing, they have to notify the butters, there has to be newspaper advertising, because five years ago, you told those butters that this permit was good for five years. And for instance, the butters may have changed in those five years, as an example, so that you can't simply say, okay, come on in, any problems? No, okay, great, here's another five years. You can't do that. The problem with that is two-fold. One is that they have to go through the renewal process, and second, even more so, whether it's in-law or anything else, there's a timed permit. People have sunk money generally into doing something with that special permit. The ZBA may have changed hands during that time, whatever, and view things differently. And suddenly, for instance, a business that got a special permit five years ago is told, sorry, we don't think so much of you, as the other committee did five years before us, you have no special permit anymore. Oh, and by the way, now you're out of business. Now, I mean, I think that's going to put us in a very poor place legally, and I think it is a very poor place to be working with the permit holders. However, there's a, there's, there's nothing preventing, kind of talking to land use council, that there's regular review. We can always enforce the stipulations of the special permit. I think what's crucial is that if we're concerned that the stipulations aren't being met, obviously, anybody can complain anytime to the zoning enforcement officer, saying, hey, Joe or Jane has a special permit, there are stipulations in that special permit, this particular one, number seven on the list, isn't being met, I think, you know, there's a fair amount of fear. However, you can formalize that so that every X number of years, the ZBA works with the zoning enforcement officer, say, hey, ZBA, you know, or the board would say, it's time for a review, let's go, have somebody go out and make sure the stipulations are being met. The classic case I read about was a, I think it was a non-commercial radio tower in somebody's yard that they had built. So somebody could go out there every, so often, every three years, every five years, make sure that the thing wasn't going to fall down. And there wasn't, you know, and if they, if there was a problem, then it could be enforced.
Specifically for public safety.
Right, exactly. So, you know, my advice to the ZBA would be, unless, again, we, I think, surmounted that hurdle on the in-law apartments, is don't do timed permits, in the sense of ones that have to be renewed. Any other special permit, you know, you can put in a review period, so every so often, but don't set it up for renewal as opposed to review.
But could the review renege?
No. What the review would do is that if the review found that stipulations weren't being met, then the matter goes to the zoning enforcement officer. The zoning enforcement officer says to the permit holder, you're not needing this stipulation. But that's no different than any other special permit or zoning in general. Everybody has the right to file a complaint about the zoning, whether it's a special permit or not, to the building, to the zoning enforcement officer.
The, the other thing that needs to be looked at, too, is the, the special permits that are tied to the applicant. That, that's problematic.
Which is like the in-law.
Right.
Well, the in-law dies, and the person that owned the house is no longer there, you know, does the permit transfer over?
No, it doesn't.
Well, if it does not now, but I don't think it should. It should.
It really needs to go to the property.
Because some people buy homes because of that extra room.
Yeah.
Here's where Charlie had just talked about, and I'm not trying to sit my hand on it, the renewal versus the review. So, to your point, somebody comes in and buys a house that's, they spent some money on, they put an in-law apartment on. The idea of the renewal is to say, okay, Mr. Smith, you want to now purchase this house and you want to become the holder of that special permit. We're not going to deny you that as long as, hopefully, you're continuing what was granted in the first place from that point forward. Now, it's, part of the renewal also is, like Charlie said, if there's new butters, they now have the opportunity to come in and say, hey, this isn't quite what the special permit was granted for, I have some complaints with this. So it gives you that, that process of looking at what was permitted to make sure that it's maintained through the timeline for that permit.
Okay.
And I, and I think the main difference between the two is the amount of paperwork.
Well, it's also the cost, too, because when the person bought that home, when the person bought that house...
Right.
They bought it based on the value of the house because of the addition was on it and the rent changes. Instead of coming back to tell the person, got to rip it down, you're taking money out of their pocket because of the...
Well, also...
I think we're kind of getting off track.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which track was down.
That's for one.
I thought I was, I thought I was going to join the committee.
I think that, Danny, that answered your question.
That's something you need to address, because that's, that and the in-law apartments for the zoning board are two major problems.
That sounds like a good discussion.
Good, good starting point.
So if the, if it's agreeable, the board could make the appointments for these gentlemen, and also Mr. Diaz and Mr. Melius to be on the bylaw committee?
Well, this isn't fair, we've been given all our knowledge and everything, now we got to appoint them to the committee after we're in.
Well, you have to...
We solved the problem on the...
Well, we should establish a size, we should, it, it looks like we have...
Sevens?
Well, six with maybe a vacancy for...
For seven.
Yeah, for nine.
That's what I'm getting at.
Town official, yeah.
Well, I thought we had another gentleman from the zoning board that was interested as well.
Oh, okay.
Well, we don't want to... If that occurs in that, I'll check again, oh.
Was that Peter?
Yes, it is. Peter was interested, so make it eight.
I'm not going to want to hear anything.
So, no, Peter, Peter had emailed me, I remember, to say he was interested.
Okay, so we've got Peter.
Alden Mary.
Rob.
I was thinking make a member, you know, a board of eight.
Yeah, well, that's, that's...
Yeah.
No, how about nine, that way it's an odd number.
Uh, I, you know, either way, you need, well, either way, you need five then to fork form, so, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, and I think definitely adding a couple extra in hopes that other people do...
So make it nine, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no problem.
Don't give them any, any reason to discourage people from...
Right. So should we appoint Peter tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Peter, Rob, Gordon, Mark.
Mr. Diaz, is he?
Alan.
Tom.
Tom. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Rob? No, not me.
No. Right, no.
Oh, she already got the...
And Rob.
You're trying to volunteer twice, because I won't do it twice.
Well, you work twice as hard.
I just wanted to make sure you get volunteered periodically.
So that's seven.[1612.25]
Six.
Right, because we have...
Yeah, right. Five here, two in your potential.
Do you have that one also?
Yes. And then we'll bring it to a total of nine members, two current vacancies.
And they don't expire?
Correct.
Once you're in your...
No, for us, well, June 30th and 19th, we'd say.
Yeah, yeah. I tried.
Let's push it to 2:20.
As much as you're getting, most of your other ones.
Do they want to take a tentative first date?
Yes, do you want to... Well, can we appoint you first and then we can make a date? I have that motion from...
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I second, I suppose?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, you can't. Tom really probably should not.
No, that's why...
He shouldn't participate in anything.
Oh, then all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
And Tom is abstaining.
Yes.
Okay, so when do you guys want to meet?
Tomorrow.
Oh, sure.
Nice try, but...
How about family dates? And I'll be there, bring your families along.
June 30th, the fireworks.
Well, you want to take into account board meetings, too. I know Wednesday nights, Board of Health meets.
Twice a month.
Yeah, so, you know, do the alternate. Planning board meets the first and third, or is it the second and fourth now, or is it yet?
First and third.
First and third, Thursday. ZBA, second Monday. Rob, never.
Why don't you do Wednesdays?
Rob makes all the meetings.
Does Wednesdays work for all of you?
Well, it's not a Board of Health meeting.
Yeah, but you could...
Is this only like once a month?
How often? You guys can decide how you want to handle that at your first meeting. I would recommend twice a month because you'll never get anything done once a month. But that's up to you folks.
So what, Thursday's good for you, like you're up Thursday?
That would be perfect for me, I don't know.
Well, I think it's unfair to...
I mean, I think that should be...
Okay.
Yeah, the whole group, that's what I'm saying.
Well, you can do that, but I mean, for your first meeting, that's what I was getting at.
Discuss with everyone, find something that fits.
Well, we're going to be here July 12th, so you guys will be welcome to join us.
Let me do this, I think there's something called a doodle poll.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
That I'm going to, I'll send out to the board, to the committee membership, and give a variety of dates and you folk, and I'm going to assume something like a seven o'clock. So I'll put in a variety of dates, you all work out, you know, you check off which...
We all circled?
Yes.
That's right, that's a good way to do it.
The only other question I had is, can we have those meetings videotaped?
I can try, you know.
Yeah, we get a certain amount allowed.
I should be able to contact every fifteen.
That's good for note notes.
That's the man behind the curtain.
But look at a couple of other people involved, maybe they'll hear what we're discussing, dislike and agree.
Yeah, it isn't something people think is happening in a closed, dark room someplace.
Maybe we actually entice somebody to show up.
In which case, we'll try and get you all spaced out here, that'll be one of the considerations, just to make it easier.
Yeah.
And what's the selection meeting, Tuesday nights?
Yeah.
But every other, so we may meet the second...
For instance, you might, the committee might meet the first and third of Tuesdays, as an example.
That might be nice.
We never meet, we gather.
Yeah, well, this one would make more sense, because if we can get somebody to film.
Well, we should be able to. We have a...
Okay, I wasn't sure if we did or not.
Do you have any other questions of us?
Well, I don't think, you're ahead of time in solving all the problems.
I don't think I'm getting any of them.
Yeah, no. I could give you, I have in this drawer, I have some hard candy. I have some hard candy in this drawer.
Doesn't melt during the summer, so...
I have mints.
Oh, yeah.
Is this an official meeting, because I'm not too sure.
Yeah, we're done. Thank you so much, we have another clock.
We've got a Boy Scout coming in, literally.
Yep.
Charlie, you send them sometimes, what is that?
It's called a doodle poll. They email, basically, it's a web-based scheduling program, so everybody checks off which dates are available.
Thank you so much. Thank you for agreeing to this, too.
Look, you can't, you're a doc.
Thank you for agreeing to this.
I haven't had a DNA test, so still not sure.
Okay, that's good, it's the bands packed together, that's awesome.
Okay.
No names?
Yes, let me see if the Boy Scouts are here.
No, I know, it's really...
Because of discussions.
Well, because you've got experts that have been, like, I almost...
Different experiences, different things.
I tell you, Dan does his homework, very engaged.
He's like Ian Hutton.
Yes, really.
No, no, he is.
He's like Zuckerman.
He's like Edgar Searle, like he researches, and I bet...
I think something comes of this.
Hi Frankie, how are you? Good, why don't you sit in the front row? And Frankie, want you to introduce yourself to the rest of the board?
Hi guys, I'm Frankie, everybody. I am an Eagle candidate for 239, and I'm a little late, I'll have to admit.
Are you late for our meeting, or are you just late?
I'm late for starting. I should have started a long time ago, and I waited. So my idea for my project is I want to do the blacksmith shop, and I want to take some of the fencing out and put a new one in. I have some pictures for everybody. Thank you. Three, four, and then this is the after.
Oh, nice one. And this is something that you've already talked to Mr. Shea?
Yes. And the rest of the committee. He approved it. So my plan is to take out the fencing that's there and clean out all the shrubs and then put a new one in.
Okay, new fence.
And then put two feet wide of mulch.
Okay, no new shrubs, just mulch.
Yes.
Perfect. And you're going to do something with the weeds?
Yes, we're not even sure those are shrubs anymore, we've got a...
Yes.
Well, they have their own minds.
They look pretty when they're...
They're worth their weight in ounces to my house, too, so. They're in the garden right now, but...
Have roots, will trap.
Yeah.
So did you meet with the entire historical committee, or just Mr. Shea?
Just Mr. Shea.
Okay, now, well, he's got a good temperature on that committee, so. And what is your timeline, Frank?
It's very tight.
Yes.
Very tight.
Like tomorrow?
So why don't you tell us about what, when you would start, and when is your target completion?
My plan is to start, like, in the beginning of July.
Yes.
And to end maybe the middle of the, like, to finish all the fencing and everything.
Okay, perfect. And you turn 18 on?
The middle of August.
Perfect.
So I got time.
Okay. We've got a couple of days for good weather.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you start tonight.
Yes, I was getting...
Work at 24/7, and then complete this project.
Sounds like the weeding is going to do the biggest...
That's what I'm talking about.
Because there's actually simply, I mean, you're going to have to do more than just many rounds.
Those are old rose thorns, aren't they?
Yeah.
Old rose bushes.
Yep.
Yeah, but it's good that you're just going to mulch, so then you don't. And Mr. Shea is aware that you're mulching, and he's fine with...
Yes.
He has, Mr. Shea has looked at this final version of your presentation here.
Yes.
I know, I keep asking.
Because it's important.
Okay, perfect.
You know, I'm playing a game, my hair cut later this week, I'd like him to not do something that I don't want him to do.
I love those weeds.
Does anybody have any questions at all?
No.
I wish him well, that's an industrious project. The fences won't be a problem, but, you know, removing all the shrubbery, because if you don't get all the roots out of that, boy, it'll come right back on you.
Get good gloves.
Yeah.
And do you already have your paperwork ready to be signed this evening?
Yes, I do.
Oh, I'm very proud of you, Frank.
Get welding gloves, not regular gardening gloves.
That's good, because I'm usually running around.
Yeah.
Frank.
Is anybody doing a vacation at the end of July?
Why, you got a free ticket someplace?
Also, it's a new rule, if, say, Kim signed the paperwork, Kim has to sign the final, that's for sure.
Yeah.
You can't have Charlie.
You mean, I got to put off my vacation?
Well, we just want to know that. So whoever signed the paperwork tonight shouldn't be, should be available the last week of July, is what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm only away...
I can't guarantee that.
But you can do it when you go on vacation, I could drive it down.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'm going to Bahabur on August 2nd, just for a weekend, but...
We understand, it's a lot, it's not a...
I have vacation in my backyard.
Yeah, Mike Roy wants to go home for the weekend.
Happens to your foot.
I missed the stair of my house and stepped on it.
Oh, you don't give him that, you were trying to kick him, and he moved.
I'm just going to weekend, but that's... Okay, all right.
The truth comes out. Work in benefits.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the project with the contingency?
We do, because it's past his bedtime, I don't care how old he is.
That there's support from...
I would move that we allow for Eagle project, the replacement of the fence, and the destruction or the removal, demolition of bushes and shrubs surrounding the...
Current border.
Current border, okay.
Do we need to add, authorize Kim to sign?
Yes.
Yes.
And to authorize?
And to authorize the chair to sign the paperwork, releasing the land to him in perpetuity.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I stand unbeneficiary.
Yes.
Yes.
You know, you should be able to just give him his wings with all the feathers that are being shed off all the other Eagles that you have.
No, it's water, come.
I know, special shout out to your troop leader here, Mr. Burgess, who worked very hard to be able to get you in tonight.
Are you guys still, are you still the largest, smallest troop in America with the most Eagle Scouts?
Something like that, absolutely.
So when I'm taking out all the fencing and the brush?
Yes.
Can I take it to the town dorm?
So that's something that you need to double check with Mr. Hayward, who is the highway surveyor.
But you can tell them that the board's giving you, you know, the okay for this project, but he's going to have, because the brush issue, I think they do take the brush down once a month, so you may, you know, rate with him for a particular date to bring the brush down. For the fencing, I'm not sure, because that's going to be construction debris, that may be something that, but check with Mr. Hayward, because he's also overall in charge of recycling center, the transfer station.
So his name is Steve Hayward, and he's the highway surveyor in the seminary.
Will it be cut up into manageable pieces, or is it, and that should be able to go to recycling without a problem?
So something you have a campfire?
It's going to be town construction debris, so we should be able to do it.
Can't make the smores out of it, because of persia trees.
Well, I wish you well.
Thank you.
You know, late bloomers always rise to the top.
Well, we're going to be on you, we'll be watching.
I drive by every day, so I'm going to be watching.
No, you will, absolutely will, we will. So if you have any questions, just let us know, but please make sure that you contact Mr. Hayward in the next couple of days.
Well, this, the board needs all the copies of these, so we just need a copy, right?
Yeah.
And you've got it, so, you want this?
Yeah. Thank you so much.
There you go, you can put that down for your next project, recycling paper.
You know, if something comes up, please call the SLIC ones office, I mean, the board's very supportive of the project, they're not here every day, but Kim and myself are here, so if there's any complication or you need something else signed, then we can contact Kim and things like that.
Well, the one thing, and I'd like to thank the troop and management, the direction they give, because you've helped make Halifax, well, the type of town, the quality of life that people want to live in, because they see all the projects and all the nice things that are being done. So you're contributing, not only just beautifying that particular area, but to the whole town. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Great town.
And thank you, Mr. Burgess, for all of your support for all of the Eagle Scout parties, really. You are a gem for us.
And I'd like to know where all the good fishing holes are, so...
You know, we did a project down in State Forest, and I got the head of Fish and Water from the state.
Which one?
Uh-oh.
Early?
No.
Tom Early, no?
No, Ameren. Best.
Best.
Nice guy.
Tom Early used to be charged in this area.
He told me about the fish holes down there in the forest, and I'm excellent.
Yeah, nobody goes into the, deep in the woods, and they stock those ponds, and you got trout, bass.
Yes, it was fun.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I know I'm short on, but I didn't want to say no.
Ah, we're flexible.
That's the best.
It's a good project.
Excuse me?
Yeah, it's mandatory.
Vacations are coming up, don't hurt the other fellow, okay?
Absolutely. I think September I'll be back with three kids.
Just want me to check with me about the project?
That's the reporter's paperwork.
My son Connor wants to do the pavilion now.
Yeah, so we're super excited about that, because he's actually come to Hops meetings.
Yeah.
So we're really excited about that.
But he has, he's 16, so he's got...
He's got time, but he's going to need time, because that's a big project.
I mean, he's breaking ground, we already wrote all the materials, the amp table.
Oh, perfect.
So we're going to start that.
Awesome.
September, hopefully get that.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm so excited about the pavilion, awesome.
Yeah, so.
Okay, thanks, Pete.
That's the one right over there on the side.
Yep, well, the new playground, my youngest son is thinking about doing a 20 by 30 structure.
So he's come to Hops meeting and has presented.
So you're going to have a portrait of me up there, I just don't...
Absolutely, why not?
That's where we bring the babies. Thank you, Pete.
Good night, guys, again. Good night, good night.
Safe drive.
Pam, we have some live entertainment permits today?
Yes, we have a lot, we have three of them.
The first one down, we've got Harbor to the Bay Bike Ride, and that's every year they come through, they use the 58th pit stop.
Yes. So this is for the 15th Annual Harbor to the Bay AIDS Benefit Bike Ride.
I remember when I started.
And so this is going to be on Saturday, September 15th, 2018, and it's been approved by the police chief. And the fire chief.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is Gelfy, and this is for a band, for a party, front and backyard on Laurel Street and Circuit Street. The fire chief okayed it, the police chief okayed it, and the board of health okayed it. And this is for July 28th, for a birthday party from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m., and they expect 45 to 50 people.
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one is 30 Cedar Street, Brianna Core, this is also a birthday party, it is from 6:30 to 9:30. Type of entertainment is a little boombox with a radio. There's like 10 people, and they will be, somebody will be, the parents will be sober and in charge at all time. The parking plan is in their yard, and the fire chief okayed it, and so did the police chief, and it is for June 27.
Yeah, it's tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow?
She came in yesterday, so I got it to the fire.
She was cute.
Yeah, and she asked for 9:30, even though...
Our normal is nine.
No, I have both, I have a permit up for each time, whatever you guys decide, and she also said, hey, we just go inside.
I think we should keep it to nine.
Nine.
You want it to be nine?
Yes.
I think she'll be okay.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to amend it to be nine.
Okay, so it'll be nine, okay.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the last one is Rosary Salvatore, it's for 337 Plymouth Street, for July 11th, and this is the 7-Eleven community event, and it's free to residents, it's from 11:00 to 4:00. They're going to have a ring toss, a beer bag toss.
Bean bag.
Oh, bean bag.
Beer bag.
Oh, God.
Wow, I've never seen one of those, I might have to go.
Hey.
I guess that's the new balloon toss.
No, it looks like, that looks like an R, I thought it was like a bear as in a R.
Oh, bear.
I thought it was a beer bag.
That looks like an R.
That's even worse.
So they're expecting about 50 to 75 people, and all the 7-Eleven employees will be sober at all times, and it will be in the front of the store parking lot.
It's nice to hear.
Fire chief okayed.
When is that again?
That is on July 11th. Police chief okay, board of health okay.
Was it 11 to 4, did you say?
It is from 11 to 4. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mine is the beer. The beer, okay. The beer bag.
What, no wine cooler?
Okay.
So you don't have the licenses?
I know.
All right, we have reappointment for, okay, for the holidays in Halifax, because I had time, I hadn't gotten back to him before our last meeting, and so she wanted to be reappointed. The only I didn't have on here was Bruce. Now Bruce says he wants to be reappointed, but he hasn't done a little testing. So we could still reappoint him. I tried to send him another email, say, "Hey, Bruce, to get up here, I haven't heard." So that's up to you guys.
I mean, I love Bruce Pulliam, and he's done so much for the town, but I feel like if we appoint him without him doing it, then we set a standard.
We've done it before, though.
But we have.
He had a part of the group last time, but that was...
But we're not sending the cards down into the subject, too.
Oh, okay.
So we can still, I didn't put him on here, because I just, so we can still do him, contingent on him.
I only have two permits.
No, it should be three.
It was three.
Because Junior did Vassad.
Oh, okay.
Somebody's not true. Contingent, we can do Bruce contingent on him doing ethics training?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys put this, so why don't you guys do your...
Do I have a motion for Tanya Masa?
So you can, let's do her first.
Oh, yeah, we'll do her first, because it's no contingency. Do I have a motion to appoint Tanya Masa to the holidays in Halifax?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Love her.
And do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Pulliam to the youth and rec with the stipulation that he pass his ethics training online?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If you get a stipulation, doesn't...
I think we did everything.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, oh, yeah, no, because Mr. Zotos didn't have... Can I just ask you about Mr. Zotos? Did you actually speak to him? Because I know he didn't show up at the last...
I think we've been emailed.
We've been emailed back and forth.
Did he, and he confirmed?
Yeah, he did.
I hope he's okay.
Oh, you know what, he was supposed to come, because the reason why, other times, is he's been out of state on business, but he was, but we accepted his state, right? Because I haven't looked at the emails since he got back. And he did say that he would be...
I'll contact him again, we'll find out what's going on.
Yeah, only because we have, if anybody at home is interested in serving on the way, we have three openings.
Uh-huh.
And capital planning, we have an opening.
What is that?
I'm moving with journalists, there's further business to be taken care of.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody, see you on the 30th.
Yeah, night, 11:03 in the afternoon, 6:00 to 10:00 in the evening, fireworks at 9:00.
And if you want to volunteer, be at the tent by 10:45.
And please, we accept single people, too, come down. Just down here. Don't leave anybody out.